Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll give you the count.
That's it, honey.
That's it. Congratulations.
All right. So Vice Chair, actually, you know, we usually do this slate. Is your slate the same?
It is.
It is? So let's just go through the slate as it currently stands and then potentially move on the slate. It's all right? Mr. Grove, are you willing to be Vice Chair?
I am.
Who are your Deputy Clerk?
So I'm going to recommend Ms. Newman again as Clerk. Deputy Clerk is Michelle Berta. And then Carol Johnson will be the new Service Superintendent's Deputy.
Right. And they must have agreed to it. MBGS, Mr. Grove?
Yes, please.
Miss Bynum, willingness to serve is our good work trip?
Yes.
And you had an alternate last time, which used to be Ms. Meyer.
Yeah.
Are you willing to be an alternate for that? You want to know what it means?
That's probably.
Yeah. Basically, we just meet monthly and I mean, I tend to meet monthly. We could both meet if you wanted to learn more about Headwaters or just to find a way or sick or something.
Usually it's to ensure we have some type of representation there.
Usually we'll meet with the Headwaters, the Executive Director of Headwaters generally. That's just, there'll be a report.
Sounds good. Again, it sounds good. It don't need fun. It might be one of the most fun things to get to do. And policy. Policy originally was Mr. Uven and Ms. Meyer.
This is the most fun.
This one.
I'm not saying.
So this one will be very educational. It will be very educational because it's basically reviewing all the policies as they come to us from Richmond before they come to the Board.
Do you like to read?
Do you like to?
Lots of reading.
It's a good thing to like.
I think it would be a great thing, but I kind of still have the triangles on, so I will pass.
It could be part of training wheels, like.
It could be part.
Because we are all responsible for executing all these policies.
Yeah, we all will have to do it. We will all be reading them eventually. But it's a pre-filtering step. You don't feel obligated to do it. We'll need somebody to do it. If you don't do it, I will. Next. No?
Passing.
She's passing, okay. So I'm going to be the second Policy Committee person with Mr. Uven. And that's the slate. So is there a motion to approve that slate?
So don't move.
Motion, Mr. Uven, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McCool. All in favor, aye? Aye. Post no? It's ordered. You've had opportunity to review the meeting schedule. Review the meeting schedule. I guess do we vote on that now or are we going to wait?
It's under action now.
It's under action items.
It's not changed, right? Same?
All the dates. Yeah.
The dates are the same.
They're a little different.
I'll have to go back and look.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should probably just take a look real quick. Draft meeting schedule. What changed, do we think?
Well, it's combined too with the budget schedule, so you'll see those meetings. But as far as second Tuesday of the month, that's.
All right. And the February, the February meeting is the joint one.
Correct.
So our very next regular meeting.
And that'll be at the elementary school gym.
At the elementary gym. Right. All right. All right, so we'll vote on that later. Okay. Well, welcome to our meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time during public comment prior to our action items on the agenda. And we know we're, we've got Zoom running because of the weather. So we'll check Zoom in case you have comment to make through Zoom session. We ask that speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that their comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers. Know if your meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the Board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time slaps. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thanks for coming. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening? Do we have a motion, Mr. Grove? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Miss Bynum. All in favor, aye? Aye. Post no? It's ordered. Do we have a new student liaison tonight?
We do, and I would like to recommend to the Board that we have Natalie Campbell for consideration as our student liaison.
Natalie's of course at home.
Of course.
For this time. So we'll make sure she knows. And that's also under action items. Natalie Campbell. All right, donations, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have several to report. The first one, Adams Customs Water donated bacon and sausage to a senior class fundraiser. Philip and Penny Partners donated feminine hygiene products for nursing and clinic departments. And the following donations are to the FFA program. Rappahannock County Farm Bureau, $500. Rappahannock County Lions Club, $500. Patrick Gallagher, $100. Thomas Sense, $50. Advance Auto, $250. Rose Hill Veterinary Practice, $500. Garcia Tree Service and Landscaping, $150. Staryville Barber Shop, $100. Moser Funeral Home, $150. And Wyatt Coleman is donating wood, labor, fuel, and equipment use.
And what was all that for?
Mostly FFA. FFA.
FFA?
Program, yes.
That's impressive.
And then I did share with you all our holiday party donations for the staff. I just wanted you to see, there's a spreadsheet there. I want you to see the support that the staff received from people in the community.
That's great. And a great party. All right, moving on to 3.5. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our December meeting?
Sure.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Is there any comment? All in favor, aye? Aye. Post no? It's ordered. Mr. Grove, did you have a chance to review the bills?
I have. And we're sitting right at 50%, almost all the way across. So that's a good thing to be.
Thank you for doing that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Motion, Miss Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye? Aye. Post no? It's ordered. The consent agenda had the donations, approval of the donations. They warrant to pay the bills, the attendance report, and the homeschool report. Moving on to Superintendent Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Our first item is the academic well check. If you remember, we talked about this several months ago when we gave presentations on our continuous school improvement, presentations from the principals, school improvement plan. So at this time, I'd like to invite Karen Ellis, our Academic Services Coordinator. So just give you a quick update on how that's going. Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening to the Board and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight and giving you a little snapshot of where we are mid-year with instruction and academics. I want to take a minute to welcome our newest Board Member, Ms. McCool. So we look forward to working with you this year. So I have my notes with me, forgive me in case I go blank up here, but I think I got most of it. So our teachers, parents, administrators, and students have been working, have been very busy and working very hard since the beginning of the school year. In September, Governor Youngkin announced his All In Virginia Initiative. And a major focus of that initiative was on learning loss in the areas of reading and math. At that time, school divisions were charged with implementing a high-intensity tutoring program for students in grades three through eight. And we were given a target date of October 16th. So we, about a month after it was announced, we were ready to roll. Not all school divisions were up and running quite that fast, but we got to work right away and created a model that would allow us to reach every student and be of extra support during the school day. Students have been placed in small groups where they receive targeted instruction in their area of need. Could be math, it could be reading, for some students, it's both. So far, we've trained tutors, which include our teachers, our parents, and even a couple retired teachers that have joined us or come back to join us on two new programs, both of which were provided by VDOE. So ZERN is the math program. This is an online program where students can log on and receive direct instruction to reinforce skills and content that they are currently learning in the classroom. So we're able to use that program how we see fit to match our pacing. So we can go in and identify what students are working on, let's say in fourth grade math, and they will get reinforcement and direct instruction through this online program every day. So the cool thing about this program is that scaffolds and supports are built into the program to address student learning on an as-needed basis. So I'll give you an example. If two students are working on multiplying mixed numbers and Student A is able to receive the instruction in class and they're working relatively seamlessly through the program and the problems, then it's going to let them go at their pace, but let them go. If Student B is struggling with a specific step skill, some point, at some point, they struggle with that content, then there are scaffolds and supports built into the program that will come on a real-time basis. Those supports could be a short video that may pop up and kind of instruct the student on that one step that they're missing that's not allowing them to move on to get the correct answer. Or it might be online manipulatives that are introduced to the student to help provide that hands-on experience to help them understand the concept. It could be visuals, it could be read aloud prompts that help the student to understand the directions. It could be a matter of simplifying those directions in simplest form so that students can understand. So there are also detailed lesson plans that our tutors and teachers are provided so that they can use those in class or in tutoring sessions and still provide that personal, small-group direct instruction to match what's online. The other program we just launched, so let me back up. ZERN, we launched in November. That was open to all students. So while we have specifically made sure our tutoring students receive that intervention, actually, all students can use that intervention or can use that program. Ignite is a reading program that we just launched last week. And that program was launched for students in grades three through eight. And students, it is a phonics and decoding skills program for students who struggle to decode and read text on grade level. We identified students who may benefit from the program from our screener, which is called Ames One Plus. And any student who was reading below grade level at the 25th percentile or low on oral reading fluency, we recommended for this program. Unfortunately, the weather has not cooperated with us very well. But I'll tell you, so we've only been able to get three sessions in. I've been contacting them every day about, we're on a delay, we're closed. But what will happen is, and students have started this. So students get 15 minutes with a live vetted tutor through this Ignite program. And they are working specifically on phonics and decoding. And these tutors have been trained, so if they're third graders, these tutors are well-trained on working with third graders, all the way up through eighth graders. The students get the same tutor every single day, so they develop that relationship. It's live, there's a whiteboard that they can interact with, and they have a headset. Again, we've only had three sessions, but I got to tell you, the students have been, they have loved it so far. They like getting to know that tutor. I've seen the eighth graders interacting, I've seen the third graders. Fourth grader told me the most fun at school he's had ever. Okay, that might have been exaggeration, but he told me that. So it is 15 minutes every day, and it's very targeted intensive instruction on how to decode and the syllable types and how to attack a word. So as they get older, they start, they do multi-syllabic words. So that goes all the way up through eighth grade. Students are placed in the program based on some baseline data that they are still, we are still collecting because we've only had three sessions. But we will meet monthly and get feedback on individual student progress that the teachers and tutors can then use to help them with their tutoring, with their students as well. So it's a very neat program, and we have some high hopes for that program. Again, that was provided by VDOE, so we got that up and running last week. And then there's another program that teachers are going to have access to called Lexia, which is also a reading program. And we are in the process of getting students rostered and ready to go with that. It's going to be a few weeks. That just, we were just told in December that VDOE had purchased that program for schools to use. So we're still in that process, but that will be for any student that struggles with reading, whether it's decoding or comprehension or specific content skills. So there's been a lot of programs, a lot of initiatives. Our teachers have worked really hard and trained many hours through tutorials and live and asynchronous sessions to be able to learn these programs so that they can best utilize them too. We also decided this year that we were going to give two benchmarks in grades three through eight. And in any high school course that has an end of course SOL assessment. So two benchmarks for each subject will be given at the mid-year or mid-semester point. And then a cumulative benchmark closer to the end of the course to help teachers determine student progress, assess gaps, and assess areas of need that may need support or attention before the SOL test. The cumulative benchmark is given a few weeks before the end of course or SOL assessment, so teachers still have time to remediate or address areas that may need more attention or support. Semester classes at the high school have already been through one full benchmark cycle. So we did the first and second benchmark first semester. Year-long classes, so that would be your elementary. And then some classes at the high school, especially eighth grade, like English and math, they have been through just the first benchmark. They'll go through that cumulative benchmark at the end of May. I'm sorry, at the end of March. And then that'll give teachers time to kind of analyze that data. We have a very structured process that we created, we've modified and kind of adapted to fit our needs, where administrators meet with those teachers and really dig into that data and identify those areas of need. Finally, we have launched another program called Varsity Tutors. Now, this is a really neat program. Teachers don't really have to do anything. It's so, that's kind of nice too, to offer them something where you don't need to be trained, you don't need to do anything. So Varsity Tutors is a program where students have 24/7 access to a live tutor via chat. So it's not, they can't see the tutor, the tutor can't see them, it's all done. But it is a live tutor. And the student simply logs in through their Chromebook. They know how to get to Varsity Tutors, they request a tutor for a given subject. It will prompt them, what is the subject, what is the topic or question or skill you need help with? And then even your preferred language. It's offered in English and Spanish. And then a vetted tutor will connect the student. So a tutor will be connected with the student through the program and offer assistance via whiteboard. They'll communicate through the chat, and then the tutor can write on the whiteboard. The student can then communicate with that tutor. It can be for help with one homework question. It can be for multiple questions. You can even ask the tutor if they can help you prepare for an upcoming test on this skill or content. So we are, while that, we've had this program up toward the end of November, and it wasn't used much first semester, but I think it was just the timing because we were getting close to the end and students and teachers have so much going on that we're really hopeful we promoted that this semester and really trying to get students to understand that they have 24/7 access to this resource. Another neat thing about the program is there is an essay where you can upload an essay or part of an essay. And within 48 hours, you will receive feedback on that essay. It could be grammar, it could be content, it could be feedback of all kinds. Students, it will even run it through a plagiarism detection software so that it will flag any portion that the student should go back and check again, which is very important as these students learn, as they, especially middle and early high school. Sometimes they don't even realize that it's plagiarized or potentially it wasn't their intent. So this program will help them identify that and give them some feedback on how they could rework that essay to avoid that. There are SAT prep courses in Varsity Tutors. There are enrichment courses that are both asynchronous and synchronous on subjects such as space with real astronauts who are still working in the field or perhaps retired. I've seen classes on magic, I've seen classes on arts, specific areas and domains. There's all kinds of enrichment classes, so students can sign up. And again, some of those are asynchronous and some are synchronous, like on a Saturday from 10:00 to 11:15. So really, students have a lot of different things within Varsity Tutors that could be useful to them. There are also, we've put a lot of other new initiatives in. I know Principal Whissinger and Catherine Todd are wonderful reading specialists. Reviewed some Hegarty routines with you, I think at the last School Board meeting. So those routines are daily in K through three. And we also have daily, we have given teachers in pre-K through grade five 180 number sense routines for each grade level, where they do a daily number sense routine for about five minutes every day. So this is important because number sense is actually the number one predictor of math success for students in higher level math. So if we can get those students early and help them develop number sense, it's not something you're born with, it's not something you just learn, it's something that you develop, it's a skill you develop. So we're really targeting those students early. I shouldn't say targeting, but we're really reinforcing that early and trying to help them develop that. Because we know when they get to higher level math, again, that's the number one predictor of success in those math courses. So as you can see, we've been busy enhancing the learning experiences for all students. Our teachers and parents have been open to learning and implementing evidence-based strategies, learning new programs. And we are all in in Rappahannock and continue to provide our students with the best learning experiences and instruction possible. I know I've thrown a lot into it one time, but.
Thank you, Karen. It's pretty astonishing in all those programs that she mentioned, we're talking hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars accessing programs that we would never really be able to build into our budget. So I love that everyone has been all in and accessing and leveraging those while they're available, all of those free to Rappahannock County students and families. The Varsity Tutors that she mentioned is actually through the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, the sponsorship agreement that we had with Varsity Tutors. And that is extended free to all students in every district in Virginia, which is through 2025.
2025, yeah.
And it's incredible. I can tell you, as a parent, I always say this, I have a testimonial because my daughter was working on her pre-calculus homework one night. And usually, I'm pretty good at helping her with that. But this question in particular, I didn't really know how to solve, and it would have taken me quite a while on Google, and we'd have to watch. I'm like, you know what? We have Varsity Tutors, why don't you try that, see how it is? Plus, I want to see how it, how the interface is. Within 30 seconds, she was hooked up to a tutor. Here's the grade level, here's pre-calculus, here's the question. And she pulled up her whiteboard and she's like, okay, write the question. And she knew how to do her homework within a couple of minutes. It's safe, as a parent, I love it, it's really useful. So all parents have access to that, there's, all students have.
How does parents get access?
I only tell parents.
This is the first I've heard about it. I have a student who could use up with this.
We sent out a flyer. Yes, I was going to say, so this was toward the end of November. So teachers at high school level, so we've really been focusing on six through 12. All our students are rostered, but I see it as more of a middle-high school support. You know, we weren't really looking for younger kids. But we rostered everyone. Teachers at the middle school and high school spent seminar or resource period allowing students to log in, and they log in through Clever, and that is one of the links on their Chromebook. And then once they're logged into Clever, there's a Varsity Tutor icon. We also sent, Principal Whissinger and Principal Stewart sent communication. I just did a flyer for Varsity Tutors last week, and that was supposed to go to parents via email, I believe. But they're not here, so I'm not 100% sure. So we also are hanging flyers around the school. We have asked teachers to put it like in weekly communications, like the sixth grade weekly newsletter, things like that.
Yeah, because I mean, I just, with the title Governor's School, you know, there's quite a bit of, there's huge amounts of homework. I know from current experience, and you know, the chemistry is, is an AP chemistry class, the upper level. So it would be really useful for, especially our 10th graders, who have already, I think we've had attrition from Governor's School already from the people who signed up, who feel kind of isolated. You know, it would be really important to have that connected through, you know, having our gifted coordinators. Not just a parent, but a gifted coordinator saying, hey, use this. Because that would be so helpful.
And like I said, we were really trying to get the word out. End of November, beginning of December, when we got everyone rostered, those last two weeks are a little hectic, so I kind of understood that. But last week, I asked principals to really do a big push, and I kind of took, we've given like a student flyer that Varsity Tutor provides, and we've given one to the teachers, one to the students, we've sent it to them. I know Danny Pond has done that.
It's just these Governor's School kids, again, like they're not in seminar, and their kids.
I'll make, to make sure that.
Anytime, yeah.
Anytime, just making sure. Making sure that everybody has the message.
Students.
Could we do a, could we find a couple of kids to do a tutorial for parents?
Oh, that'd be fun.
Just a YouTube tutorial?
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Karen University.
That's a good idea.
Karen tutorial, it would be, and you could just, you could send everybody an email with the link, and it explains the whole thing. It'd be pretty easy to do, I think.
That's a good idea. We can definitely look into that. I made a flyer in Camden last week, and that's a little more eye-catching and a little more pop to it. It doesn't have a lot of text. But I asked both principals to please make sure that they were sent out to students via email, but also in the schools, around the schools, so students can kind of remember. You know, I'm just thinking like when there's substitutes in the classroom and sometimes, not that learning, sometimes, you know, the reality is learning will slow down when there's a substitute, you don't have your regular teacher. But a teacher can leave something, students no longer have to be stuck. I mean, they can, they can get on Varsity Tutors even during the school day if their teacher's not available. So there are so many different things that we can use this program for.
How much connectivity do they need to help?
Well, mine is limited. We can't usually do live virtual sessions, so I was really pleased with more of the chat feature so it doesn't take as high, high of a connection speed. So even in my internet, that's pretty, pretty slow. It's okay.
Are you on satellite?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think it would probably be different for lots of folks in different parts of the county with how much connectivity they have to be able to utilize this.
I will add that we have had some of our L students, because Martina Bullard has been really, she was really pleased to hear about this, so she's been really working with her students. And we've had students use it both in English, and we had a student that requested a tutor that spoke Spanish. And she said it went flawlessly, it was, she said the session was great, the student was excited. So that, you know, I know that they've had good luck with it under her guidance. So it really is just getting the word out, making sure students know it's there, and giving it a try. But all these programs that I've told you about, you know, like Dr. Grimsley said, hundreds of thousands of dollars that we've tapped into through VDOE or VAS for Varsity Tutors. You know, it does take training. The two programs are Ignite and Lexia, but the teachers have been great. They've gotten in, they've had to learn them quickly and turn around and use them quickly. So we're learning more every week, like, oh, we can do this with this, this can help us with this. So there's a lot out there, it's just a matter of tapping into it.
And also coordinating that effort too. So thank you, Karen, for all your work and working with the principals and teachers. Because as we know, with good instructional interventions, it has to be on top of regular instruction. So this is not instead of, taking the place of our teachers. And that's an important note, this has to be on top of that to really close that gap and hone in on those skills. So they've done an incredible job articulating that and mapping that out in the schedule with the specialists and the principal. So I'm really thrilled with the progression of all-in tutoring as well as our instructional progress report. So it's looking really good. Any other questions for Karen?
I was actually wondering, is there a way for us, is there an administrative console that tells us how students are using? Do we get any feedback from the tool to tell us?
For Varsity Tutors?
Yes.
I get a monthly usage report. So my first one was in December, which we were only here part of the month. And we had a handful of students use it. Like I said, we had, Martina Bullard had several students who used it. And then some other, a couple of other students, all of them logged it. And it's just, so I even told the students, I think, you gotta help me get the word out because students, until they use it, they don't know what a resource they have. So I will get another monthly usage report at the end of January. And that's where I hope to see a big increase because we've really pushed it. Even with weather delays, we've only been in school a couple of days. But we've put a lot out and wanted to get the message out here tonight as well.
I was wondering about substitute teachers. Can, can these programs, do they continue if there's a sub?
They absolutely can.
For subs trained as well or?
So the, the good thing about these programs is that once the students have been in them, they know. So the teacher just has to direct the self that the student should go into ZERN or they have an Ignite session. That just comes with consistency being in school because Ignite is new. But the students, even when there's a substitute, the students are still accessing those programs. Instruction moves forward. And like Dr. Grimsley said, it doesn't replace anything we're already doing, what we call tier one instruction for everyone. It doesn't replace, it doesn't replace anything. It's just adds on. It's, you know, we've, we've been able to modify the schedule where we've been able to accomplish these, put these programs in place during the school day, during resource periods, seminars, things like that. It's not taking place of any instructional block time.
So, and I'm sorry, I have one more question, which is, is the math, is ZERN replacing iXL then? It used to be.
iXL is a different program than ZERN. ZERN is more of a instructional tool as far as, because it has the scaffolds and it, you know, it doesn't, it adds on to what the teacher's doing in the classroom. Whereas iXL is more just the practice. You know, it's not a lot of instru-, if you, if you don't get a question right, there's not a lot of instruction going on there. The student's gonna have to go back to the teacher, which they still may. But ZERN offers that instruction. It's, you know, it's all AI-generated technology. It, it can understand where the student is struggling and provide real-time support right there, not just give them another problem where they start completely over and try it again. Well, that didn't work for me the first time because I don't know how to get over this hump. And that's where this technology comes in. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ellis. Our next item was 5.2, remarkable spotlight from the high school. But the snow day sort of derailed what we're gonna do with students. But Mr. Stewart did send me, just to let you know that there will be coming in a new acknowledgement of Panther Scholars based on GPA and also some attendance award recognitions in February that will be spotlighted. So just to bring that up. All right, 5.3, superintendent's report, highlights from the governor's budget. All right, so we received the governor's budget over Christmas break. And we were anxiously awaiting the budget calculation tool. And that usually comes out quite a bit before it did this time, but that's okay. We don't forget it. Sorry, we have trouble pulling it up here. I have it a bit on a backup. And as you know, this, at this point of budget development, it is largely conjecture and a lot of unknowns and pieces that we will have to put together. So this is just a very, very preliminary read of what the governor has proposed. I'll pull it up from here. I have to take it from that file. Pull it directly from Powerpoint. That should be it. There it goes. All right. So for FY '25, there are different types of state revenues that comprise what we look at for what the school district and locality will get. Standards of quality, that's going to provide the, the school program with different specific areas. We'll talk about those. Incentive programs, categorical funding, your lottery-funded programs. And those make up your, your basic revenue budget from the state. Those also have another, call that a mitigating factor, a local composite index. It's discussed quite a bit. In, in the state's formula, it is supposed to determine a school division's ability to pay based on certain variables in the community, in the county, and also in the school demographic. So your true value of real property, that the state weighs 50%, adjusted gross income in your locality weighted 40%, and taxable retail sales are those three indicators. And then each local, locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of 45% and an overall station of 55%. So we could go into detail about that, but we've been discussing this for several years. And we have the School Innovative Finance Task Force that worked really diligently to communicate the disadvantage of this formula, especially for an anomalous county like ours that has a very different type of makeup than most of the counties in Virginia. In fact, only four others are sort of like us. And these factors really cause a disadvantage for Rappahannock County schools receiving state funding that looks differently from our family demographic of those that we serve in the schools and those in the broader community. So a lot of work into that, and we'll talk more about that later. So these are our revenue estimates and the state, this is not an adjusted ADM based on our projection. The state has us a 728 ADM, whereas last year around this time, they were predicting 660. So that's great. Our ADM is increasing. We're one of the very few districts, I think, in the Commonwealth right now with an increasing enrollment. All but small. And because of that, we will see a drastic increase in basic aid. Pull this out of presentation mode so I can show the full slide. Sorry, the sync function is causing problems. All right, well, there we go. There we go. So basic aid, you can see an increase of revenue estimate, $254,000. And a total in your state funds SOQ programs, $312,000 additional revenue than what we saw at this time in 2023, '24.
Dr. Grimsley, the SOQ equation didn't change yet. Based on the JMLA, changed, that's not changed. So this is strictly related to ADM.
Yeah, there are a few things in this. There was rebenchmarking done, so the ADM was the main factor. We stayed at .8 LCI, so we, we kind of knew that was going to happen. There are a few changes in the formula that we'll talk, discuss as we go through some of these. There was additional investments made in areas of priority to the governor's office that you'll see reflected in this as well. But as they say, the general assembly, the governor proposes, general assembly disposes. They work things out through the process. So we'll see what happens officially, but this is where our baseline that we can start at. Incentive programs. We were pretty surprised to see that there was no new funding in school construction, especially with the push with the crumbling schools tour. However, it's not coming through incentive programs. There is money that has been put aside at the state level out of general fund. However, the, how we access those funds will likely be if the governor's budget is approved through either competitive grant cycles or VPS bond, VPSA bond, program or literary bond. So that's access to those money. So that's why you see zero there. You'll see a slight decrease in your BPI. And I don't know if you've read the governor's initiative with early childhood. There was money put aside into that. However, in BPI, the, the funding formula, inside the funding formula is a little complicated with BPI, Virginia Preschool Initiative. So what happens is you have a cost per pupil that you serve that are BPI-eligible, usually with an income eligibility weighted at the highest level. And then there are other local criteria that we use to determine eligibility. And then there's a per pupil slot cost that the state assumes. Before, previously, they, then they run it through your LCI, true. But there was a cap on BPI to improve services for early childhood. So the cap was .5. So no county was equated or calculated over a .5. So even though we had the .8. Well, now that cap in this formula has been removed. So now it is realizing at the .8 level rather than the .5. So in this case, that cap hurts us. That cap helped us.
Helped us before.
That cap helped us before. So that's why you see the, the decrease. Now, there was a huge investment in early childhood subsidy programs for parents. And that, it made the overall education investment from the governor's office look really large. But when you break down all the pieces of the governor's budget, it actually looks more like it was mostly rebenchmarking and revamping some of the formulas that showed the increase because the investment in the early childhood piece went through VDOE. So it looked like a larger investment. So we were excited when we initially saw the baseline number. And that goes through VDOE directly, it looks like now, to parents to choose quality care for their children, early childhood, which is, is great. We did want to expand that, but if you look at our locality, we're sort of maxed out in options for students. So it might be that we are able to fund, if schools can access some of that funding and parents choose and say, we would love our four-year-olds in your preschool or three and four-year-olds because CCLC is maxed out, we can't fit any more children. Maybe there's a way to access some of that funding directly through that program to fund another option for parents here or at CCLC or anywhere. We have to see, but that hasn't been regulated yet, so we don't know.
Wouldn't that go year to year if it's parents? Is that what you're saying? Parents would say, I want my tuition to go to Rappahannock or to CCLC.
Correct.
Correct.
You gotta keep it. Yeah. And that's largely how our preschool programs work now. We've put out a universal application every year for our preschool three and fours. And that's for serving children at any locality. And we have a joint effort to look at those and see where the child will be best served based on eligibility criteria, of course, need-based as much as possible to make sure our, our children with the highest needs get served first. So that's the, the way that sort of works anyway. And then we report to the state. We can even request additional slots if we have more BPI-eligible later down the road. So we have an October report and a December report that we can say we have a waiting list or we'd like to serve this many more kids. But depending on availability and whether the state will fund, that's not really guaranteed.
In our case, we have the physical classroom space if we were to serve another classroom chief.
I'm sure we could, we could make that work. And that's something I know my preschool teachers would love because we have really high numbers in preschool, even though we have an aid helping with, you know, when you're dealing with four-year-olds, especially with the high needs that we are seeing in that age group. Having 18, 19 in a classroom is very challenging to do the work that you want to do. So getting that class size down would be great too anyway. But funding it is a problem, as you see. We don't get much, that won't cover one teacher.
And you don't know it ahead.
Yeah. So that's why it's tough. We have advocated in the past for BPI students and four-year-olds to be included in ADM as all, getting additional basic aid. So I'm hopeful they will do that. There's been so much effort at the state level to really work on public-private partnerships to be sure that we're serving our at-risk early childhood students. So I hope that's coming. Well, let's see. We did see the food and hygiene tax supplement go away. So that was an equalizer from last year with the tax rebate program that you saw at that office. So that, they don't have the supplement this year. However, sales tax was projected a little higher, came in higher this year than projected at that time. So we hope that will happen. The governor's budget as it stands right now does assume a slight recession coming up in the next year, the biennium. Looking at the fiscal analysis of sales tax and things, we're not sure that that might be true yet. Maybe eventually, but we, I think that's still gonna come in a bit higher. Stacy, would you agree with that? Bonus payment, the, the governor's budget does assume a bonus payment in the first year of the biennium. It's a 1%. So that would be, and they'll give us $12,000 toward that. And then 2% raise in the second year of the biennium is what the governor's budget is proposing.
Bonus, it, it's intended for what?
SOQ positions.
SOQ positions.
Just like any other of our supplements that we get from the state. They say there's a mandated increase for SOQ. It's arguable that just about every employee you have is partially SOQ. Or if not, you fund two of your four first-grade teachers. It's just a funny formula, so.
Comes out to like $10 a month per person.
We're not huge fans of bonuses per se because it doesn't help with their PRS either.
No.
Right. And anytime the state forces a compensation adjustment, regardless of what it is, that's more challenging for us to deal with anyway because we don't get nearly what other districts around us get for that compensation supplement. Move on. Huge here, we did lose a bit of money out of incentive programs, let's see. Med lottery-funded programs. We saw some increases here. Some additional at-risk funding came through. There was an additional career and technical ed investment that we saw on the previous screen. It's a little bit less here, but primarily for credentialing and getting more students certified in career credentials. So there's money for that. But the biggie that we were really excited about, that supplemental basic aid line going from $252,000 to $1.8 million. So yeah, very excited to start at this place. This is where we were trying to get to the last few years. So the, the governor's proposal does put our supplemental basic aid and remove the cap for us. So that's a, quite a bit of additional revenue. And what's helpful, having it in the governor's budget bill already is it will take an enactment by an amendment from one of the houses, one of the chambers to take it out. So this is a very good place to start.
And in its current form, it's, it would be legit for two years.
Correct. The budget bill supersedes anything in general assembly language. And once it's in there, it's harder to take out because when the, whoever the governor is that is proposing the next biennium budget will start with this one as a baseline. So they'll have to also take it out, whoever that person is. So it's a good, very, very good place to be, stronger than I think a budget amendment at this point. So we have a revenue summary here. So we're seeing our additional $1 million that we get to deal with. Now, because it is a budget bill and a biennium, not, we haven't changed the general assembly language just yet to ensure that's every, every fiscal year. We want to be careful on the use of those funds as well. So we're thinking about compensation, and we'll talk a lot more about this in our work session. But we'll just have to be careful for those long-range expenses and recurring costs. You may not want to utilize revenue that may not be guaranteed long-term. That's all I'm saying. So we'll just have to be careful of that and mindful. But overall, a good projection of revenue in the governor's budget, which is not where we usually start. Then there are other pieces of revenue that we'll look for, federal funding, of course. Those at this point are fully conjecture because they're based upon the previous year's estimates. We will not get those final allocations usually until late August, September, after our budget's already built. And then we reconcile those later in December appropriations usually. Our standard federal funds, you have your title programs that help with funding our reading specialist, for instance, in Title I targeted assistance, Title II improving instruction. That's largely our professional development line. Title III helps with your English language learning support. Title IV, student support and enrichment. We have special education flow-through funds, Perkins Career and Tech funds, and school food and nutrition, USDA funds that come from the federal government. Then some other revenue resources that we've become very reliant on lately, grants. So we do have some examples here, like our meant-to-be fit program, teacher wellness. The Northern Piedmont Community Foundation helps us quite a bit in different grade programs. Family Futures, EdWater. Family Futures, Headwaters. And then we did receive additional grant funding through the state for the Virginia Literacy Act implementation and high-intensity training. Now, those are for this year, we got those this year. I'm not sure that they will carry on for the following year, so that's important to know. So overall, there's a lot of TBDs at this point. But what we know from the state right now is it looks like that additional million dollars in revenue. And then we won't know the following year's projections for a while until we really break down and go through our development, see what the House and the Senate propose and amend and any changes in the SOQ, um, ratios may change something. So there's a lot that can happen between now and the time our budget is done. So that's, that's the, but last year it's important to note too, that, or for this fiscal year, that the county ask at this point was 9.4 million from the county. Other variables, health insurance, that's a big one. So we don't know that till late February, early March. We'll talk more about that in our work session about what we're thinking, um, looking at our claims and trying to make our best guess. The finance committees in the House and Senate and appropriations committees, they may amend things and change things. There are different compensations, very different compensation proposals in the, in the House and Senate bills right now that are being referred to committees, so we'll watch those very closely. Our staff intend to return forms, those should be returned by the end of this month, and then we'll have a better idea about retirements and who plans to leave and who pays to stay and those types of things. It's very preliminary, it's not binding, but it gives us a good estimate to, to see based our staffing ratios on. And then, of course, our actual allocations for state and federal funds, what our actual ADM and fall enrollment turn out to be, but they're looking really good actually. COVID relief funds are expended, uh, this year, so there will not be any more COVID relief dollars to rest our honor royals for, which we didn't, I would commend this board, we did, um, did a fair amount of work to make sure that we didn't put that money into recurring expenses that we do that. So we didn't face the fiscal cliff that I've seen some neighboring districts facing. And then our budget priorities for this fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year, supporting the Road to Remarkable, of course, our comprehensive plan guides everything, uh, teacher, staff, recruitment, retention, compensation, and professional development, technology and tech and digital ethics education, that's become a, a increasing priority level, uh, supporting student and staff mental health, continuing with our capital improvements. And then, um, we're finding out now, a community survey went out this week to understand, better understand what the community sees as our budget priorities and our stakeholders. Any questions?
Guess we could tackle them during our work session.
Yes.
DM really.
That's the overview. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Grisley. Report from headwaters representative?
Yeah, I was, I was in touch with, with Ms. Ginoli over email this time, since it's good weather. And here we have, um, her report. The after-school enrichment program, um, start, it was planning to start on Tuesday, January 16th. 59 people are enrolled and they're looking forward to offering dance for the first time in a long time. And, um, it'll be offered by a member of Boom Fitness and Culpeper, they're coming to, to lead the club. And so it's another collaboration. And, and for one, for Tuesdays, and then Holly from Commit to Be Fit will be doing dance on Thursdays, which is exciting. The Read Program was going to be launched alongside the after-school program on January 16th, and, um, they're providing support to a group of students identified by the families, are the Ms. Jenkins and the administrators. Students will receive supplemental reading support every Tuesday and Thursday from 4:45 to 5:25 PM, so it's very specific. But it's a good, it's a good program. There are 17 volunteers and there are three more who will receive training next week. And they're, they're still actually looking for volunteers who could receive training for this, um, this winter. And, um, Headwaters is looking, is working to support students with special needs in a variety of ways. There was a, there was a grant recently approved to, to purchase interactive, an interactive monitor from his Ford's Transition Classroom at the high school. And there also will be, um, there also are supporting teacher payments for a math teacher at the elementary school to help with specialized students. So that's, that's, that's novel actually. And during, during homework time when after-school is happening. And then the scholarship application that opened in December will be closing February 8th, Thursday, February 8th. That's an important date, um, even so if maybe students have a snow day, they might get on their scholarship applications because they give out a lot of money, very targeted to Rappahannock kids. And that, these are, these are for seniors and for those who have received scholarships from Headwaters in the past. So, so it's an exciting time. It's a big deal. They will be awarding $50,000 worth of scholarships. Tremendous. And you can find that application on their website, headwaters.dn.org. And then, um, we had a meeting in the, in our, in the board, office, school board office. I was there with Shannon and the Dr. Gris, Grisley and the Headwaters, um, and several members of the Headwaters Board. We had a really nice discussion and they're looking at, they're kind of big, they're pretty big for the new comprehension plan, which is exciting to do, a really energetic group with a lot of, um, a lot of drive to really help our students and elevate the schools.
You know, I was thinking something that Headwaters started doing, uh, I don't even know how many years ago now, but, uh, we had had one of these types of meetings they've been talking about. And I mentioned how, you know, we're really good at getting our graduates a scholarship that gets them started into their freshman year, but then we, we, you know, put them in a rowboat and kick them out into the water with, with no, no wars because basically we just help them with year one and year two through four or six, whatever it is, we leave them floundering on their own. And, and so they built in some continuity.
Yeah.
And, but it is a responsibility of those receiving it to continue to apply, but it's a wonderful benefit and it's extraordinary. I mean, it is not ordinary to follow through like that. So wonderful, uh, gift to the community that we don't, so we celebrate when kids get scholarships graduation. There's a whole nother set of things that are going on that we don't have visibility to that they're doing, uh, that are related to that continuity. So it's good for us to remember that. Thanks. MBTS?
Uh, we met on December 7th, but we've already talked about that one.
Can I talk about that?
We've met, we haven't met since our last meeting.
And who, who's their chairman?
Oh, I am.
That would be Mr. Grove. That's, that's good, that's good. Thank you for doing that.
Can I add one thing that I'm excited about, the change that MBGS made in their curriculum?
Yes, they did.
From biology.
We talked about that before.
Yeah. Did you mention that to the board?
Yes.
Yeah, to life, to life sciences. It's great.
That's good. All right, thank you. Moving on, uh, each one of us has a copy, a hard copy of the, uh, the SBA Code of Conduct, which we'll be voting on, and it's basically, you know, be kind. Here, I'll summarize it, be kind. That's all it really says to one another. Also, in your, uh, in the printouts that are on your table, here's a copy of the norms and protocols document which we developed, I'm gonna say, two years ago, or three?
Two.
Two years ago. And it's just good for us all to review them at the same time we're reviewing the Code of Conduct so that we can see what our, our protocols are. If you're ever wondering, you know, why it is that we may do something or not do it, it's because we're trying to, uh, follow the protocols that we set out for ourselves. So those are just for your reading pleasure. But we'll actually be voting on the Code of Conduct adoption, right? Yes, later. But, um, the statement speaking up to interest, if you haven't gotten it, is everybody turned it in yet? Okay, so they're due by what, the end of the month?
Um, February 1st.
Yeah, before the end of the month. And, uh, so you know what that is? We have to report annually, uh, on, uh, all of our, our debts and, uh, it's a fairly intrusive, uh, report that gets stored away, you know, it, uh, so we, elected officials have to submit to that thing annually. All right, moving on to polycom, does anybody like to address the board this evening? Echo, echo, echo.
And I have nobody else.
Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
No? All right, well, we offered Zoom, and, uh, if we're in a bad weather situation, we should probably plan to do that again, just to give people an option is a good idea. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on the budget process and where we're at with that, or any, any things that would add to the budget plan and process for us this evening? No? Okay, moving on to action items, is there a motion to approve the 2024 meeting calendar?
Move.
There's a motion from Mr. Groves, there's a second. Is that not your group? Is that group a second? Is there any comment? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's ordered, a motion to approve the student liaison, Natalie?
Campbell.
Campbell.
So move.
Motion was by, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uv, and all in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's ordered. Uh, a motion to approve the SBA Code of Conduct, which we signed.
So move.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. McCool. Any comments? Be kind. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. It's ordered. Is there any new business? Is there any requests for future agenda items?
Do we know where we are on the solar?
Yes, the, um, attorney will be getting back to us very soon. Structural review was done, and there are a few tweaks that need to be made, but everything will be updated in February. We'll have everything ready.
Okay, so we'll get a report in February, will you stand?
Yes.
From both the lawyers and the?
Yes, we should have everything ready for you guys.
All the things?
Yep.
All right. Our next board meeting is the 13th of February. It'll be at the elementary school gym, and it will start out as a joint meeting of both boards, and then we will dismiss the supervisor so we can continue, right, as we did last year.
Yes.
And, and we're notifying, uh, of a work session which will be occurring as soon as we conclude this, uh, regular agenda that we typically have. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
May I move the board convening to closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff for a professional position pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, that's 3711A1.
Good motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second? Second, Mr. Uv, and all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. So we're gonna go into closed session, we're gonna be in there?
Less than 10.
Less than 10 minutes, and we'll be back in this room, at which time, uh, we will certify, we'll have a motion regarding the personnel report, and then we will move directly into the school work session related to the budget. Okay, see you in two minutes.